Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Watertown City Council Work Session of Monday, September We would, we have the ability to have Dan here tell us about the, it's the permit form that you worked on with Chip Primus, right? Would you like to come to the microphone? And Roderchott has helped our fire department come up with a reasonable permit form modification, and he is just going to share a couple of words real quick about it.
Testing, there we go. Yeah, I promised Albertson I'd be under five minutes, so I'm gonna try and even do it quicker than that, 'cause I know you have a lot of things on your agenda. What you see in front of you is just the form that should now be more up to speed with today's standard terminology, and so, kinda studied it industry-wide, and then I shared it with Chip, and near as I can tell, everything should be covered in this permit. You'll also see that I tried to do it in a one-page format in order that would work for city displays and/or county displays, so it'll be the same whether the county commissioners look at it or the city council. So, you can take a look at that, you don't need to give me any answers now, but I put some time into it, and I think it's pretty thorough. I think it addresses all the things that are, like I said, that are up to today's standards and terminology, and I'm also gonna be working with the state of South Dakota on their state permit out in Pierre this winter to try to make sure that their form is also up to speed. So, the only thing I would add with that, I know how many things you guys have on your agenda, sometimes I look through them, and you have a lot of things going on. One recommendation I might make to you, and this is the same thing that's done down in the city of Sioux Falls, and that is that they give their fire department the leadway to make the decisions on these permits, so you wouldn't have to necessarily look at every permit request that comes before you. I think in, just in being, you know, conscious of your time, you have a good fire department here. I would say, you know, release Chip or Doug or whoever to make those decisions and see how that goes. And if for some reason it doesn't go well, you can always step in and say we can change that, but I really think it's one thing that would buy you guys some time, and I don't know how important it is for you to have to look through every permit that's coming through when you have a fire department that's already, you know, taken a close look at it, they're scrutinizing, making sure everything's up to speed. So, that'd be my one recommendation. With that, Dan, am I under five? Okay, so, so unless there's any questions, I'll let you guys get to the rest of your meeting, so.
This, this is the permit that we have on our council packet for action on the burning a W display later on, isn't it, I believe?
It's the same kind of permit, but this is revised form.
Yep, and that's the one that, we thought we'd give it a test run, Glenn, so when we got the call from the high school, from Steve Moore, and he asked if we would do that for the burning a W again, I thought, let's test run it and we'll get it in front of you. You know, and there's a good case in point, sometimes we get a request like that, and it's only a few days in advance of a show or a display, and you might not even be having a council meeting, so, you know, I do feel that giving the fire department that free, freedom to maybe make those decisions might be to your best interests. And like I say, the city of Sioux Falls does this, and others do also, I'm sure, but, but that's entirely your decision, but just a recommendation I might make, so.
Thanks for your work, putting it together, appreciate that.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And if you've got any questions anytime, just, you know, call me at work or give me a call, and I'll certainly be happy to explain any of the terminology too, so, all right?
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, item number two is presentation, review, and public input on the proposed long-term capital improvement plan for Fund 212, Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund. Proposed capital improvement plan book can be found on the city's website under government/departments/finance, and a hard copy is also available for viewing in the finance office. Where did Shane go?
I can at least start the conversation. You'll find it, hopefully everybody has their proposed budget books. You will find, let me get my cheaters on, 'cause that's small print. Thirty-eight is the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund. At the top, you'll see the department description, and that outlines what the second penny can be used for. And the first, and of course, on this, we don't talk about debt, because that's a year-to-year commitment, so we don't put that on our long-term capital or equipment. But the first part of it is the annual program, that's something that is done annually, it's, it's, you know, they have the plan, but it's not always given, it's not always named, kind of as to be determined or as requested. And so, if you guys have any questions about those, the only thing that I will make a comment on is for the mill and overlay program, that amount was changed to reflect the 2018 amount of 900,000. And the seal coat crack seal is the same as what it's been for the last couple of years. Sidewalk curb and gutter program, that one, the ADA piece of it, is I think pretty well complete, but we do still have that program where if people do their sidewalks, they have the opportunity to get a portion of that reimbursed. So, to kinda keep that program going, there will be funds that will need to continue to be put in there even after the ADA is 100% complete, unless you wanna change how you're doing that. The traffic signal improvements has gone down, but there have been some instances in the past where due to storms, due to people with a little reckless driving have run into them, whether it's the actual poles themselves, whether it's the box that has all the guts that makes them go, but they are expensive. And so, to have them come out of somebody's operating budget, it's just easier to have some money set aside for some of those big expenditures. If they don't get used, they just go back into fund balance, but it's something that's there so that we don't have to try to accommodate that in the general fund, in the street department, and, and carry that forward and have that expenditure there. So, the decision was made to keep it in for some of those instances, but it is not used a lot, thank goodness. Or if we come to the point where we put new ones up that aren't on Highway 81, 212, Highway 20, that are the city's responsibility to completely put up, or to, when we did the one-way to two-way, some of those signage changes can come under this line item. It's, it's, to the eight, nine, 10 million dollar budget in here, it's pretty minor, but it was felt that it needed to stay in for some of those unanticipated. And then, of course, the downtown parking alley, we've been having an effort to get some of that transformed. In the future, that could maybe be expanded to other alley projects, that's up to you guys, you know, how far you wanna take the alley portion of it, or whether you just wanna keep it to the downtown. But I think there's still some projects for the downtown area for these outgoing years. I see Shane is back, thank you Shane, 'cause I wasn't gonna do the rest of this by myself. My, my extensive knowledge ends at these annual programs, so if you guys have any specific questions, you can address them to Rob or Shane, otherwise, we can kinda go into the capital projects, and you'll see that there's a whole lot more of them, it's a lot more extensive. I'll let Shane go over. As you guys know, we partnered with the state with a grant to do a pavement management system, and they went through and they, I don't know the technical term, but they basically punched holes in the street, and they, and they did some research, and they came out, and they graded everything, and threw everything in a big database, and gave it to engineering. And so, based on that data, based on, on what came out, they came... I won't even make a comment. They came up with a long-term plan, and so, I will let him say more about what that whole process was, what the report came, the contents of it, how they came up with the five-year. Some of this you'll see was in 2018, or, yeah, 2018, that did not, that got cut because of the budget constraints, and so, those have been put back into the long-term, and you'll see those few in 19, I think, one in 2021, if I remember correctly. But at this point, I'll just kinda turn it over to Shane and let him explain the process and how he came up with the projects, and Mayor can chime in if, if you want to, and it was kinda something that, that they talked about, and I just sat and listened. So, Shane?
Can I ask a couple of questions, Shelly? Whether it's a Rob question or a Shane question, but the, so the mill and overlay numbers that are in here, and the seal crack, or seal coating and crack sealing are about what we've been spending? Is that about right?
Our dollar amounts, it's up, we're requesting 900,000 moving forward, and it was 850. What we had had for the last, I think, two or three years, I think, was 850.
So, it's approximately what we've been doing? Is that an adequate enough amount for those two types of spending for us?
I believe the seal coat, the 400,000 is good, the mill and overlay part, you know, I had mentioned here a while back about getting to, back to that 12,000 ton of mix that we used to do every year. We're down to about 9,300 ton of mix for about that 850,000 dollar mark. So, to get there, we'd need to be over a million dollars to get close to that 12,000 ton again. We're slowly working our way up is what I'm trying to do with that.
So, where we're at then is, that's just getting us back to where we were at.
Right.
And so, we're about 75% of the way there, you're saying?
Yeah, a little better probably, yeah.
Eventually, I'd like to get to the point where we actually have a better handle on what, what we need to stay on top, and, and we've, we've got the first step done with this pavement management system, and we've got a, a basis for understanding how much money we need to put toward crack sealing, how much we need to put toward chip sealing. There's other techniques that we don't use that we'd like to do, that we aren't putting money in the budget for right now, but would come out of those same funds, like flush seal, or slurry seal.
Slurry seal, micro-surfacing.
There's, um, micro-surfacing. We've, we've...
Right, we've learned a little bit more since then.
We didn't do it, it was too expensive.
We didn't do that.
We've got bidders, but we had one bidder, it was too much.
Twice as much as it should've been.
But we, we probably will be seeing an increase in that next year with a more detailed analysis of what we really need to do to stay on top, to keep our levels the same. So, we didn't, weren't prepared to handle that this year, so we just budgeted the same amount, essentially.
Well, why wouldn't we if we're looking, if we know it's gonna plan to go up, why wouldn't we do some incremental increase here, to see if that...
We could do that, there's just no solid basis for it yet.
Right, so let me, let me jump in a little bit more. We did look at other technologies, as the mayor had mentioned, micro-surf, uh, micro-surfacing is a newer technology for this part of the country. Very few companies are set up to do it, so we don't have a large pool of contractors that can come in and do that. So, what they wanted to do, see then, is large projects when they come in, and we didn't have a large enough project to get a reasonable unit price, so we, we didn't pursue that when we took bids on that a couple of years ago. Just came back from the Public Works Seminar in Orlando and visited with those folks, they had a booth down there, and, and we flat-out, the end of the discussion was, if you can create a big enough project, we can help you. But we're not to the point where we've identified a big enough project to, to do that yet. The other side of that discussion is, if you can partner up with other cities that are closer to you, now, right now, the closest they're doing this work to us in the state of South Dakota is in Sioux Falls, Mihaa County, you know, with Brandon and T and some of those. If we could get Brookings and Madison and us to all bid a project closer together, we might get, start to see the reasonable bids. And we will always try to pursue those new technologies when we can, but bottom line is, we still need to be able to afford them, so that's our, our, our approach to that. With regard to mill and overlays, we've been playing with a few unique ideas that we haven't attempted in, in Watertown before. We used to do just a standard two-inch mill on everything, and then re-overlay it. We're starting to look at, maybe we only mill an inch and a half from the edges and leave the centers alone if there's not too much crown already, and then just overlay over the top of everything. So, we're gonna try to save money on some milling and extend our overlay program a little bit more. We, we dabbled a little bit with that, not this year, but the year before, and it made a significant impact. What did we carry over, Rob?
I forget the dollar amount we carried over, but it did, per block average was about 13,500 dollars a block last year, where normally we're spending over 17,000 dollars a block, 17, 17.5. So, there's, there's a savings there.
And, and it's not all about saving money, of course, it's becoming efficient with, with money. When, when we're looking at overlays on residential streets, we probably don't need to do a full two-inch overlay. A lot of those residential streets could probably get by with an inch and a half, so we take that extra half inch and then move it to another block, you know, it accumulates, and we can get, get further. So, we, we're looking at different techniques that way. We do have to get a little bit more aggressive on our replacements. The pavement management study showed us a lot of, of need for what they called a thick mill and overlay. Well, on a lot of our older streets, the street was originally only built with a three-inch asphalt mat, so when you're milling two inches off of a three-inch mat, you don't have anything left to sustain the construction equipment that's gonna roll over to rebuild it, so you end up destroying the bottom inch trying to replace the top in two inches. So, we have to recognize that when, when they're talking about a thick mill and overlay, that's really a reconstruction project for us. And, so, we, we're identifying that with, with that pavement management study and trying to budget accordingly. The other component that's not in the pavement management system that we, we need to incorporate into our evaluation, and we're, we're gonna get there, is a better program of communicating with our utility companies, Watertown Municipal Utilities. If they need to do a water main down a, a street that's, we're scheduled for a mill and overlay, or even a reconstruction, we should coordinate those efforts so that they're not tearing up a fairly new street when we're done. I hate to mill and overlay or do a substantial improvement on a street in 2018 that they're gonna tear up in 2020, 21, you know? So, we need to coordinate those efforts better. We, we do have that coordination with our wastewater department, and we've actually started to implement a few new ideas there too, where we're not just carte blanche, patching a middle of a road, we want it all to be on us, kinda the same pavement cycle. So, we're, we're, we're working those details out. What, what you did see in the current CIP is, they had a five-year recommendation, and I took the five-year sort of data that they came up with, and I threw those numbers and those projects by prior, by how, how they prioritize them. Now, we need to relook at them, we can interchange new streets and in and out of the program as we need to, but we took their, their 50,000-foot view of the five-year program, and that's what was input into this CIP, so.
Shane, I assume that we should be doing that pavement management study periodically? I mean, how often is that recommended?
Correct. I, I, at this point, until we reach year five, I would hesitate to redo it till I'm back to where I, if we get reach year five, then I think we should have it scheduled to be redone. To do it any sooner than that, 'cause here, here's the reality, I think, based on budget constraints and the way, I mean, the economy's not bouncing back as fast as we'd like, unless we find a different revenue source, our five-year program's probably gonna take seven years to complete, something like that. You know, we're gonna slip a little bit, in other words, we aren't gonna be able to be as aggressive some years as we want, and really, that's, we're victims of the climate of the bidding too. If asphalt prices go up, we're gonna get less construction mileage done, so we have to be, be conscious of that through this five-year plan as well. As projects don't fit in the budget, they get bumped out, they'll slide down a year or so, and so, that's where I think we'll end up with some slip. We didn't slip very many this year, in 2018, what was it, two, three, Mayor, I think, is all we slipped.
That we, you mean...
That bump, got bumped out of 18's into the five-year plan was about three projects, I think, something like that, so.
At least three. The pavement management study cost 100,000 dollars, and we did that with a grant, the state paid for 80,000 of it, and we paid for 20. We can set the budget for what we wanna do, and that study will tell us what our level of service, what we should do to maintain our level of service. And that's what we got, we had to bump projects. So, we're not maintaining our level of service this year, because it would've cost us a couple extra million dollars, which we didn't have. So, in the future, we're gonna address this head-on as, you know, try and budget for what we need to keep our head above water, so that we don't end up in the hole someday with a bunch of streets gone back to gravel. So, that's coming, this is a work in progress, and we, we've got prioritized projects, you see them in the book there, for next year. If we can see an increase in revenue, we'll add more street projects. And if we add another revenue source, you know, we can, that's up to us, how we wanna manage that. But this study will help us to know where to put the money to get the most bang for a buck.
Shane, when we talk about the overlay, the mill and overlay, when these roads age, does the base deteriorate too at some point, where you just need to go in and redo them so that that's more stable and you have less damage to your roads, or?
Yes, and, and there's many factors that come into play. Hopefully, you're milling and overlaying when that remaining pavement is still viable and, and supports the construction equipment, and that's the key component. If, if you're getting too old, I'll give the current example, good example was Derby Down, or not Derby Downs, Summerwood this year. You know, that could've been milled and overlaid, but we looked at the age of the pavement and the condition and said, why would we overlay this? It's only three inches thick, and if we milled off even an inch and a half, what's left isn't gonna be strong enough to support anything. So, we, we decided that we would just take out the entire pavement structure and rebuild it, and that's what we did, and that's our approach. We're, we're gonna look at these from all kinds of factors, age, you know, the traffic that's on it, the condition of the base, that all of those things are factored into whether we do a traditional mill and overlay, or if we're already to reconstruct. And, you know, the pavement management study did a good job of at least separating the truly bad from the mediocre to the, from the good, and then we have to decide what methods are, we're gonna use locally to maintain that. So, I hope that answered your question.
Now, this is Shelly's question now. As we look at this, we, we addressed this last time, we're looking at all these numbers, and this, this doesn't take a look at what the projected incomes are at those years, this is just looking at a need, a dollar figure, and we'll deal with what fits in the budget in the year, correct?
Correct, 'cause, I mean, this only takes into account a portion of what the second penny pays for, and that's just the, the streets, storm sewer, like the recreation programs, but it doesn't take into account the transfers, the debt, and then again, where our revenue sources are and where they're at, so.
But the point is, is as we're going through this, we're not looking to say, okay, if we add 50,000 here, we gotta find someplace else in this to take 50,000 out. We're not looking at balancing anything right now, we're just identifying a need, attaching some dollar figure to that, right?
Correct.
And then, when each year comes, then that's when you get into the actual budgeting and, right?
And you can look kind of historically, I don't have my book in front of me, but historically, you know, 45 to 50% of the second penny has been used for street and storm sewer projects. So, when you look on 2019, 2021, on page 39, you'll see 2.07, 2.7, 2.7. Those are pretty realistic. When you get into the 4 million, you know, that, historically, we have not had the revenue sources for that, but by then, you could have some additional revenue sources, we could have additional sales tax revenue that would support that. But right now, if I'm just looking at that, I would say that that's not a sustainable year unless something changes in these outlying three, four years. But the rest of it is, is pretty well in line with what historically has been able to be done unless there's some drastic shift. And so, right now, we're, we're not really, right now, what, what we're saying is that these will be supported with second penny dollars, and that's kind of where we're stopping at that, that we would need this many dollars in order to do these projects. But there's nothing that you have to balance out, there's nothing you have to cut, you just need to be conscientious that on some years where there's a lot more dollars involved, it's, it's probably gonna be a year that's not realistic, that you're gonna have to, unless, like I said, you, you find some additional revenue sources, and...
That year that we have, we see a big dollar amount is a year that we anticipate getting a grant to help us with the Third Avenue Bridge construction costs.
Exactly, so, I mean, there's, there's a lot that can happen, or if you get another revenue source to take care of, of like, some of your storm sewer costs, that would free up money to do more street projects. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that could change in there, but I think you need to be conscientious of what's coming down the line, and do you, you know, how, how urgent do you need to look for additional revenue sources to keep up with the streets? And you're always adding new streets, so this is only gonna get bigger as, as you go. So, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a good guide for you guys to kinda see where things are going and, and where the need is, and, and what the dollar figure is, in today's dollars, of where that need is.
So, I'm a little confused as to why we wouldn't, if we know we wanna expend more dollars in the future on the mill and overlay, whether, no matter what that technology is, We know that this doesn't account for inflation, why wouldn't we wanna have, albeit we don't know the answers to exactly what the technology or projects are, but why wouldn't we want to have some escalation in that mill and overlay over the next five years?
You sure can. The, the thing that you're gonna wanna keep in mind is, is when you look at this, the more unrealistic these numbers get to be sustainable, you're just gonna know that something is maybe gonna have to be cut, and so, what is that gonna be? Is that gonna be an annual program, is that gonna be a reconstruction program, is that, you know? To me, you still have to, you have to try to, to know that what you budget should be able to come close to what you're gonna bring in, otherwise, there's... Otherwise, there's just a given that something is gonna have to be moved. And, and if that's what you guys wanna do, that, that's, that's fine. Cause in the end of the day, um, you know, you guys are gonna have to balance that budget each year. And you'll have to plan on what projects to do and what projects don't. And if the annual programs are, are a higher priority to you, then allocate the money to them and, and shift some other projects. You know, I mean, that, that's, that's kind of the balancing act that you guys have to play, cause you have a manual maintenance cost. And then, you have a reconstruction fixing, um, you know, repair cost. And, and you just, there's not enough money right now to do all of it at the level that it needs to be done. So, you just, you have to pick where your priority is. And, and, and with the help of, of Shane and Rob, you, you're just, you're gonna have to put your money where you think is, is gonna be the biggest bang for your buck.
I would just say too, that I think, you know, some of these figures are, I would consider sort of a placeholder. You know, and we revisit them every year, um, if we spot a trend. You know, we can certainly make adjustments on the fly too, I think.
I would also ask, the material costs fluctuate up and down both years. Mike's point has merit, as you look at this, and you would think logically it would go up a little bit each year. But I think the material costs seem to up and down all the time. That throws another variable in.
We have held pretty steady the last couple of years on cost, but you're right.
Another thing to, for note, your clarification. Um, the, uh, numbers that are in this strictly deal with the, um, street surfacing and conditions. It doesn't identify, um, one of these streets might need some storm sewer work. It might need, um, something else. So, it's, it's not an overall budget that encompasses all the potentials. It is strictly, um, a placeholder for pavement management and from that standpoint. So, there are other issues that we need to, uh, as we get closer to these projects, we'll identify those and, and vet those through, uh, our budgeting process accordingly.
Anybody have any specific questions on any of the projects that you wanna go through?
I do have one, just real quick. Um, the, the micro-surfacing materials. Is, is the cost directly related to the, um, availability of people to do it? Or is it materials, or both?
It's probably somewhat both, but I would say it's more about who possesses the technology. And, you know, there, there, if there's a limited number of companies that can do that, then they're gonna bid hard on the larger, more, um, profitable projects. And the small project that we might toss out there, then they, we don't get a realistic price, because they're gonna put us on the back burner. And if they are gonna offer us a price, it's probably gonna be something that we're not anticipating or wouldn't pursue. That's exactly what happened, um, two years ago when we did it, uh, or in sixteen when we did it.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll come to Watertown, but it's gonna cost you.
Right, right. And, and we, we were mystified that it was gonna cost that much more, because to us, the hundred miles between Minnehaha County and Cottington County is, is a blink of an eye, right? But for them, with all their equipment and then, um, manpower, they're gonna move to the next big project rather than the small to medium-sized project. And, uh, the only contractor within reach of us by bordering states, there's only one in Minnesota that does this. So, the other ones are coming from Florida and Arizona and all over the country. I think Kansas City might've been the next closest, if I remember right. So, it's, the, these folks are coming on a long ways down the interstate to get here with that technology.
So, co-op in with somebody like Brookings or something's probably out of the question.
That's probably a key component, so.
Shane, where in here, and maybe it's not the right time right now, but where in here is any dollars of allocation in the future for the, the drainage way up by, uh, Cherry Drive area?
That's in the twenty eighteen budget. You're looking at the twenty nineteen, yes.
And that was just a, a small amount to do some, um, uh, minor improvements. It's not a big, big wholesale improvement project at this point.
Okay, so are there any big wholesale improvements required? Or are we just doing a cleanup to open up, or?
To be determined what the scope of that project will entail. I mean, it's, it's certainly to clean things up and make it better. Um, we haven't decided what technique or approach that, uh, entail. We don't have that much detail in it at this point.
So, should we not be, do, do we think, whatever that amount is, I can't recall, uh, was it fifty thousand? I think it's fifty thousand. Should we be doing anything more in this budget for that?
I, again, I would say to be determined.
I would say whatever you set aside for that drainage course, set aside for every drainage course in every quarter section. This is, um, setting a precedent, what you wanna do. I mean, this is a, a wetland, and we talked about putting in a pipe. That wouldn't, you couldn't do that for fifty grand. And the wetland mitigation costs were gonna be giant. We didn't even calculate them. And, um, this would, this money would be adequate for making it more park-like. Maybe put a little bridge, get some access over to the bike trail. That's what I'm envisioning, something that the neighborhood can look at and not choke, that would actually look like an amenity instead of an accident. Um, but to, to put that underground due to the mistake that was made, that the pipe put in too low upstream, it, you have to go through the entire quarter section to make it right again. And I just, I personally have a big problem with that. Um, if you do it in this subdivision, you better expect to do it in every subdivision. And either do it upfront, make the developer do it, or embrace the natural environment, which was the intention of purchasing that waterway. And that's documented, so. We, we can do a better job in the future of how these things come about. And I hope we will. I certainly intend to. That, I think we can go a long way to make it better than it is. Well, we're just letting it sit there right now. And that's not acceptable to anyone.
So, what's your proposal?
My proposal is landscaping and, you know, shaping it, making it, um, plant something that isn't ugly and, and make it look like you wanted it to be there, instead of oops, look what's there. And then, make a path through there, because right now, the neighborhood can't get over to the bike trail. So, we should, we need to have connectivity in our, um.
They are living there right now.
I know. And as far as I know, there was no money in this budget for this year to address that, was there? Do we have money in twenty seventeen? So, you know, there's money in, in twenty eighteen. And, and I, I think for the most part, we're talking about earthwork. And we can partner with Game Fish and Parks, like was done over by, behind Sixth Street Circle on the bike path there. They were very happy with how that mess turned into an amenity. And it didn't cost a lot of money. And, um, so, I, I mean, it's an eyesore. We can, we can go a long way with landscaping, much farther than we can with pipe underground. Drying up the wetland is, is pipe. And we can't just dry it up without mitigating for it. Mitigating wetlands costs a lot of money. And I, I don't think we wanna do that with every subdivision.
Yeah, I'm, again, Sarah, I'm not suggesting that, that we go some full big gamut. That, as a matter of fact, I think that's contrary to what the intent of that area was in the first place. I just wasn't aware of what the overall thought was in that area. You know, knowing that we had something in there, I didn't know if there was, if there's like more to come. Well, then we should have more to come that's reflective in here.
That we'll have something nice, that we can make something nice for the neighborhood in twenty eighteen. And hopefully, that will be sufficient. And I mean, if it isn't, we can take it from there. But I, I do think that it's possible to make that much, much nicer than it is, without a lot of money. Other questions?
I have a question about the, uh, the skating rinks. Maybe I missed that, cause I was gone part of the time on these. I see there's a, on the bottom of page thirty-six, that there is a, a reference to FFNE for money to be put in to buy, I suppose, all the extras. Does that mean that in eighteen, the ice rink will be built? And that these are just finishing touches to the ice rink? It's on the bottom of page thirty-six.
Thirty-nine.
Oh, it is thirty-nine. Sorry, thirty-nine.
That's okay.
On the bottom of page thirty-nine, that would indicate to me that we're now finishing it. And I just didn't realize, uh, now, and my question would be, and it's in ignorance, because I probably wasn't here, is, what is the plan for the two ice rinks? Or, you know, my plan or my thought is to do the west side of town ice rink, or what, where are we with that?
Well, and I can speak to the money. The two thousand eighteen is where it's budgeted, um, cause there was never an official budget put in um, for the ice, and then the revenue sources around that. So, um, the departments, when they put in their long-term CIP, had, had put that in. And I think it's, it's more kind of like what you're speaking to is, once a project is done and the facility is open, there's always things that will come up. Um, but you, they don't always fit into the, the cost of construction. And they're just kind of add-ons, and then it, it doesn't keep a project open for eternity. It allows it to get closed out, and then you can kind of add things as, as you find that there's a need for them. So, I think that's what they put that in, because the eighteen budget reflected the construction. But I think that's all dependent on, on, um, you know, going forward. And I, I'm thinking the mayor is involved with continuing that and getting plans put in and determining revenue sources and, um, you know, so I, I don't know. I, I know that for the bond proceeds, they need to be a hundred percent used by December thirty-first of twenty nineteen. That's the end of the five years. Um, so, there, there is a, a timeline for having a hundred percent of the bond proceeds used. But as far as a timeline for getting the project completed, we just, we needed to put an official budget in with some revenue sources, and that was done in twenty eighteen. And, um, this will move accordingly, depending on whatever, um, happens as far as the timeline. But I, I'm, I'm not involved in the timeline piece of it, just the money.
You said the bond has to be used by two thousand nineteen. How many dollars are, you know, just offhand, how many dollars are left after we did the, uh, community center and then the ten, the softball fields? What's, what's left in that account? So, what are we dealing with?
Well, as, as far as the, the dollar figure, there's about three point one million dollars in, in dollars that are sitting in there, um, available. There's a couple million dollars of outstanding private funding that will come in, that will eventually release bond dollars to be used, um, for other projects. But there'll be three years before we'll recognize that. Um, you know, so, I mean, as far as dollars, that's, that's how much cash we have in there. And there's some receivables, um, that will be coming in. And then, the rest will have to come from either existing capital dollars or private funding, or however you guys, um, determine to make that work.
Shelley, when we budgeted for the wellness facility, we budgeted the whole project, and it included a, a number for FFNE. Um, if, if we started the, the rink in eighteen, I don't know how long construction would be for that. If it, if it does, goes well into nineteen, then this is a good place for this. That's fine. Cause that, those expendables typically don't come till the end anyway, or close to it. But if we were to go into, uh, uh, twenty eighteen where it actually gets done, um, and the, the planning for the FFNE is in twenty nineteen, I see a problem with that.
Well, I think, I think this number is just for, um, kind of like the wellness center. Once the facility got open and going, there were some things that were identified, like, um, some additional speakers, um.
Okay, so this is above and beyond what would normally be some of the FFNE in the building?
Yeah, the original FFNE put into the construction is really to get the facility up and functional. Right, yep, yep, for anything else. And I think they kind of put a little money, like twenty thousand aside at the ballfields for some of that, um, where they identified some additional fencing or, or benches or awnings or whatever that would come up that just really wasn't anticipated during the construction of the facility. So, I think this would just move in accordance with the timeline of the facility being constructed. And that's a good point for Dan. Anything that's on the bottom, you, you've already seen it in these other budgets. It's just something that's easy for you guys to identify, that these projects in these different departments are coming from second penny dollars. So, you can just kind of see each year, in addition to the roads and the storm sewer, these are the other projects that have been identified to use second penny dollars, um, in, in order to, to fund them. Which, if you look at the beginning and the narrative, you can see the total revenue dollars, um, being planned, I think on page five. And, and that's where that corresponds. That includes everything from all those other departments, so. Does anybody else have any other questions on anything? Comments, changes?
Um, we, we weren't gonna walk through these line by line. I'm, I'm assuming from base.
Unless you want to.
Well, that, that's, that's fine. I guess the only comment that I've got is, as I look at, um, the, I, I've gotten a fair amount of complaints over the last year, two years, on the Tenth Avenue project. I see that's not budgeted until twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. I realize you're going based upon your pavement management study, but like I said, I have gotten a fair amount of complaints about, about Tenth Avenue from the hospital over to eighty-one. So, just a comment, I mean, the consideration of moving that up anytime sooner.
One, one of the factors that time, put it in its time slot, was, um, getting the, uh, hospital construction project completed. Um, I don't know, um, I, I'm quite confident that they'll be continuing to build well into nineteen. I don't know if they, if they plan on opening their facility in nineteen or, or twenty. So, I kind of wanted to wait till after they were done beating the road up, before we start putting it on a schedule for us to put it back together. And, and so, that, that was part of our consideration.
I, I don't disagree with that. I, I thought the timetable now was a little bit quicker as far as that project getting, getting done.
And it may be, but Tenth Avenue, quite frankly, was not, um, towards the top of the five, five-year plan either. But, so I did kind of bump it in there, uh, at, at a point where I thought it was appropriate when, but definitely should follow the, um, construction of the hospital.
In the meantime, we're probably gonna have to do some more, um, temporary maintenance, I guess, on that, till we get a reconstruct done.
Is that gonna be a full reconstruct? Are you gonna have to take that thing down?
Yeah, that's the plan right now, is a full reconstruct. When we actually, it'll be a two-phase project, I believe, is what we.
Right, we're talking about, I, I have budgeted nine hundred thousand in, um, twenty and then nine hundred thousand in twenty-one, so that would get that whole corridor, um, from eighty-one to the hospital constructed.
How wide will that, what's the width gonna be? How, how wide, how much wider?
That's to be determined, but we're not.
There's a lot of people up in the neighborhood think that they're gonna be, you know.
Right. We're gonna try to do it where we put sidewalk on one side, probably, is what we'll propose. And, uh, not destroy all of the trees. Um, however, I think the last time this project was discussed, some of the trees have probably already, um, perished or been damaged substantially by storms and been removed. But, um, we, Rob and I have driven this several times. Primarily, there's no parking throughout that entire, um, run. So, our intention is to design and build a, a street that is of adequate size, but probably continued to not have parking on that street, because it is an emergency route to the hospital. And uh, there's about four different street widths between eighty-one and the hospital, and what we're gonna do is uh, evaluate which one we like the best, probably do a cost estimate, see how that fits with this proposed budget, and then go from there.
Will you be looking at doing storm sewers at that point, or are they in bad shape?
We'll always, as any of these projects come forward, we'll evaluate storm sewer needs as well. Uh, and again, that's not specifically included in these budgets, but we'll have to um, have that as part of the discussion, as the project actually develops into a real project that will take the bids.
It's kind of a ridge, and we're, north of tenth flows to the north, and south of tenth flows to the south, so there's not a whole lot of storm sewer in there, just to get it around the corner and down.
That'll be the nice thing with that project, probably won't require a, a ton of storm sewer work, so, be on top like that.
Any other discussion or comments, proposed changes? Um, otherwise, if there is not, then um, basically, the long-term CIP will be presented at the, I believe, October second, is that the next council meeting? For adoption, um, but on the um, on the budget ordinance tonight, it does reflect these numbers as far as what we're holding for reserve for capital outlay, you'll see that on there. So if you would make any changes, that would not be reflected on, on the budget ordinance, but um, we could make those changes and, and reflect that in our year-end calculations, but...
I think we need to take a look next year and look at that mill and overlay, as to what gets us back closer to where we need to be. It's, we, I mean, we keep going back, it's...
It's gonna be, I, I think it's gonna be a sobering um, wake-up call. Let's um, look at our, our liabilities as far as pavement in our system goes, and, and what's it going to take if, if we're, you know, figure out what we need to stay on top of it. I, I really want you to see that upfront, and so you're making a conscious choice about h- how we're gonna address this, 'cause it's a big gl- black cloud over the future.
I think we've made a big conscious choice over the whole of us, for the most part, but you're exactly right.
Yeah, we, we have, I mean, having this pavement management system now is gonna enable us to do a lot more than, than we were able to do without it in the past, so it's really nice to have that, to help make decisions.
A- and I just wanna point out one thing. We, we talked specifically about mill and overlay, but where, when we need to, like we did this year with the, the development out by the lake, that we'll have to do complete reconstructs with money, but uh, from the mill and overlay budget. But what my intention is, is that we'll try to limit that to projects that just need pavement surface removal and replacement, not the base and the curb and gutter and all that stuff. So, so you'll see a few projects that just take off all of the pavement and put it back in under a mill and overlay project. We'll have a different process, hopefully, for the ones that need base work and new curb and any storm sewer stuff. So you'll see those kinda intermingle, but I just want to be clear that mill and overlay means more than just mill and overlay in some instances, so.
Anything else?
Actually, if we got a few minutes, I, I do have a question. I, I primed uh, Judge Foley on this before the meeting, but I wanna, so I wanna have him prepared. I'm, I'm referencing tonight's paper, a big story about the skate park, and I, I was definitely a supporter of that going back the last couple of years, but I couldn't help but be concerned about the picture. You know, we got, we got two young guys here, absolutely no head protection, no knee protection, no arm protection, nothing whatsoever, uh, using that thing. I remember we had a conversation with uh, when we approved the bid for this, with Justin, okay, what is our exposure to this? Uh, you know, I'm not gonna speak for Justin, I mean, we were led to believe that, you know, it's relatively limited, but I, I, I did ask our city attorney, you know, what do we do to l- limit or mitigate our exposure? Because I, obviously, we do have some liability uh, for use of that park. If somebody cracks a, a skull open, it's not a matter of uh, when, it's more than likely if. And I guess I, I'd like your, you know, your opinion on that, Vince, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, I do remember Don Robey smacking headlong into Jeff Heller uh, down at Crazy Hills um, back in elementary school. But, uh, it's, it's a two-part question. Uh, the first question is, is there liability? And yes, I mean, there's always going to be liability. Liability occurs when we have a duty and there's a breach of duty. Are we breaching the duty? Well, that would need to be determined, and that would get us to the issue of uh, coverage or, you know, the Assurance Alliance's program that they have with Doug Kirkis, who assesses our liability, assesses our risk, and, and provides good suggestions for everything that we do uh, in the city. And uh, it would be something that uh, would involve insurance coverage with the Assurance Alliance, so our exposure would be uh, limited by our insurance coverage. You wanted a lawyer answer, you got one.
Well, and, and just, just since Justin isn't here, we had this question, and, and we did call and, and kind of like pools and everything, parades and everything else, um, there is that element. And um, the city has a due diligence to, you know, part of negligence is our, we having something in disrepair that would cause someone to um, have an accident and hurt themselves. And the other part is, and I know the signage is a big thing, Public Assurance Alliance, if you're gonna do these things, they're, they're really, um, put the signage out there, put the rules out there, put the, you know, um, that you skate at your own risk, that um, you know, what's allowable there, what's not, so that if they're on um, a bike and bikes aren't allowed, then they're basically violating the rules, and it, it helps. I mean, anybody can sue anybody, now tell me if I'm wrong, anybody can sue anybody for any reason at any time. So, they can name the city in a lawsuit, no matter what you do, but um, for the city to kinda do their due diligence, to put something out for a recreation purpose and lay out the rules, lay out, you know, what's allowable, what's not, and, you know, maybe just running it by the Public Assurance Alliance. 'Cause at the time, we hadn't even bid it or built it, we were just asking the question. Um, and I know Justin came back and said signage, big, big issue. Make sure that there's signage out there, make sure that the rules are there. If there's hours, you want them deep out there, if there's no lights, um, you know, those type of things. Just make sure that that's all very clear to everybody, um, and then it, it, it helps the city in that way too. But once it's done, we can sure take that back to the Public Assurance Alliance or to Doug and say, do you have any additional suggestions? 'Cause at the end of the day, because they're our liability carrier, if we are named, it, it's really up to them to determine where that fault is and, and to what level they'll, they'll defend the city in any of those instances.
So Vince, in layman terms, what do we need to do to be held unresponsible for that?
You can't be non-responsible, you have to be responsible. And to be responsible, you, you need to know what the standards are for that type of facility and comply with those standards. To do that, you'd be in, you'd be in contact with Doug Kirkis.
Yep, it, the conversation, and Shelley's right, that's exa- exactly about how that conversation went, but it's very similar to our approach to the swimming in city park. No lifeguard on duty is the warning sign, and the expectation that nobody's gonna be there on station to save your life that's employed by the city is what that, no lifeguard on duty implies and means. And similar type of approach to the skate park is, as long as the skate park is maintained in good usable condition, we're gonna have the rules set up, up there and, and uh, skate at your own risk type of scenario. And I, I agree that that needs to be um, vetted past our insurance carrier too, just so that they're comfortable with whatever we, we do. But it's kinda the, a similar approach. You, you, you build it, and, and if they wanna use it, it's at your own risk and, and uh, go from there, but...
Shane, it would be real similar to what we do with our softball diamonds and our baseball diamonds, you know? There's protective head gear, now the gear that you should wear.
True.
But if they're out there practicing or playing, and they don't do that, that's not our issue.
Right.
That's their issue.
Right.
So it'd be, I think it'd be a real similar scenario, as long as we maintained it properly.
Let's be honest, we've had this scenario for a number of years, as long as the other skate park existed. So it's not changing the activity, it's just changing the location of the activity. It really is, is, is what this project did, so...
You know, whether we're liable or we're not liable, um, I totally agree with what Shelley said, and I, I drove by it before I came here tonight, and I was, I was surprised to see a lot of kids out there with no helmet. And uh, you know, just for the safety and welfare of those kids, I think it's a great idea to have that signage in place. I, I, I hear what Mike's saying, 'cause I don't think we had a sign at the softball field to say, you gotta wear a helmet if you're batting. I don't know that we do that. But I think just for the health and well-being of those kids, you know, they're skating around on concrete, and I know for my own self, when I'm out there skating up there, I'm gonna be... What's so dang, what's so dang funny? Did I say roller skates? I meant skateboard. Anyway, I think it's a great idea, and I think it's something we should, we should look at right away, and perhaps Vince could help uh, uh, pan some of those rules, if he'd be willing to do that.
Maybe the police department can make a um, a check and hand out goodies to every kid wearing a helmet and protective gear. I don't know when they might do that, but maybe...
I'll be there, I'll be there.
Wear your helmet, kids.
I know Jay did say he's working on some signage for the park, so, he did mention that.
All right, last call for anything else? We are adjourned.